Okay, I'm gonna clock turn six thirty here on the east coast, but five thirty central time. So I will, and I see that we have online and in the room a quorum of the city council, city of Hillsborough. So I will call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of our consent agenda. Under that, we have item one vouchers totaling one hundred sixty seven thousand, five hundred eighty four dollars, twelve cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? Next up, we have minutes from our July one, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any corrections or questions to the minutes? Third, we have CDBG vouchers totaling twenty one thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. Did everyone receive copies of the CDBG vouchers? I think there were two items under that that totaled the twenty one, four fifty. Next, we had number four was an invoice from APAC Kansas for seventy two thousand, nine hundred sixty five dollars. Any comment there, Mr. Styles?
No, this is for the, uh, what we, what we did in the piping project for KDHE on the refundable, or excuse me, forgivable loan. Uh, so what you have here are the, the pay estimate for APAC who did the work. And then, uh, the next item is submitting the, uh, the request to KDHE for reimbursement for that amount.
Okay, were there any questions regarding that?
Those two, four and five, um, do we not need to include the? Five thousand, that's part of the EBH? Cause on, what is it, page thirty, it has the seventy two, nine sixty five, but then it also adds in the engineering for a total of seventy eight, nine fifty seven, fifty five.
In the past, we have not put the reimbursements in front of council. Also, it's been approved for the, that, the reimbursable loan. Um, but with this being the APAC one, it's, let me, whatever you say, Matt, but I'm just explaining that we've not put all the reimbursements in front of council.
Gotcha, that, that's why.
Okay.
So yes, we'll pay them though. Yeah, they'll, they'll get five thousand, nine hundred ninety two dollars.
And you would have already approved that as part of a voucher.
Okay.
Process.
Gotcha.
Maybe not in this one, but at previous voucher process.
Thank you.
It is confusing because it shows up again, effectively here, so.
Are there any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I make a motion.
Okay, Councilman McCarty, is there a second?
I'll second it.
That's Councilman By. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now come to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the room or online from the public that would care to address the council at this time? John and Matt.
Here to hear about the fire station.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. He doesn't shout.
Okay, is there anybody online, Matt?
No, sir.
Okay, so we will close the first public comment and move into our business items. There, the first up is consideration of a lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank for the purchase of golf mowers, Mr. Styles.
Yes, sir. So we, uh, sent out, this, this is just the lease purchase agreement in order to execute the mowers that you guys have already given approval to. We didn't actually have to pay, uh, Kansas Golf and Turf to hold those mowers for us, who've been holding those, uh, in advance of these documents. So, uh, these are our documents. Um, they are not the, the bank's loan documents, and the reason why we do that is because there are statutory requirements in, in, uh, for us on a lease purchase. And banks typically don't have those, uh, you know, those clauses within their, uh, documents for them. Uh, so you see there, the total amount is, uh, seventy nine thousand, one seventy, one seventy seven. We got, uh, the off-model lease Jacobson, um, that would be for the, uh, fairways. And then the, uh, the new Jacobson with, uh, that's the greens mower. So, uh, everything included on there, pretty straightforward. You've got the amortization schedule on there, uh, we opted for a four-year payback on that. Um.
One question on the amortization schedule, I think KGT's amortization schedule reflects it correctly, but on this one, uh, exhibit A1, under payment data has all two thousand twenty five.
Just read in August.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if that just.
Yeah, just, we just need, yeah, make a change on those days.
The KGT's, as I mentioned, is, is correct as they give theirs. Um, a couple pages down, yeah.
Yeah, we've got the wrong, wrong years on there, sorry about that.
Just as long as I'm not expecting.
All of it in twenty twenty five, no, no, well, it'll go out to, uh, was that twenty twenty eight?
That time machine.
Twenty nine, excuse me, February of twenty nine will be the last payment.
Right, so those will all be paid off then in four years.
Just in time to turn around and look at and replacing, probably, well, actually, no.
Twenty five, twenty, twenty, thirty years?
Mm-hmm.
And, and how soon do we get those after?
Um, yeah, once we issue payment, we'll get the, uh, the used one is available now, and then the other one will be available, I think he said, two to three weeks. So we'll see if that holds.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a, uh, a motion to approve the lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank with the corrected years, as, uh, pointed out by Councilman Jorgensen with that correction, and, uh, would accept a motion for approval on that.
I make that question.
Councilman Jorgensen moves, is there a second?
Also.
By seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, move on to item two, which is resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine, declaring intent to seek USDA loan funding and issue debt for the fire station project, Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is a resolution that's required by USDA, as you can tell by the format, it's kind of generalized for everybody. Um, so what this does is authorize us to incur the debt should we get, uh, should we get the financing through USDA. Uh, it expresses our intent to seek that financing through them and that, and their supervision of this project. Um, if the city were to accept a loan, the city's committing to follow in the USDA guidelines for things like equal opportunity, uh, discriminate, non-discrimination agreements, financial audits, reporting, et cetera, et cetera. The list is long and distinguished for the USDA as it is with every federal program, so, um, this, there, there is a condition in this that it only takes effect if the USDA loan is executed, outlines those obligations that have to be met throughout that, that process. So, um, it's requirements, non-binding enables us to move forward in the USDA process. Um, they have moved the due date up to August one, um, so I've been working on getting all the things required for the application put in. Um, this is one of those things, and so, um, yeah, we will get it put together, this is our last meeting before that time, but, um, according to the representative from USDA, once we get that in, in, put into the system and it gets it approved, uh, he thought within forty-five days, they would have some sort of, um, notification as to whether or not it was funded. Um, so that puts it somewhere in September, the middle of September potentially, to get a notification from USDA that they've accepted our project. Um, so we'll see. Um, I'm not holding my breath on that one based on my experience with them recently, but this guy seems pretty motivated to move. So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna get all this resolution and, and all the documentation, again, it's, it's a very long and distinguished list for that too. Um, but yeah, what we're recommending moving forward with resolution twenty five oh nine, and, uh, that'll enable us to proceed with the loan process.
So what happens if we get the appropriation funds? If by some.
To be determined.
Some magic.
Yeah.
You never know.
To be determined, I think what will end up happening is that loan, so, once they give us the, the approval for the loan, that doesn't actually issue the loan. What that does is allow us to go out and get the construction financing. We build it, and then once we're done, it converts, you know, we convert that, uh, construction financing into long-term USDA debt. Um, at that point, if we had an appropriation in place, I think it could take the place of that loan. So it'd end up being, that's the way I have understood it, and maybe, maybe that's too simplistic a way to look at it, but that's.
It's the government, so.
One never knows, I'm sure there's a process for that too, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, that would be kind of how I'd envision that process moving forward, we would have, you know, the, the twelve to eighteen months to construct it and get everything moving forward, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine, declaring the city of Hillsborough's intent to seek USDA loan funding.
Oh, motion.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Wilk, Wilkinson moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Jorgensen.
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman By.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine is approved and hereby adopted, the mayor will sign. Next up is consideration of an ordinance, number fourteen oh nine, authorizing the issuance of debt for the fire station project, Mr. Styles?
Yes, sir, so this is, uh, this is the, the typical authorization ordinance that we have anytime that we issue debt. We actually approved one, uh, at the last meeting when we issued the Salem home, uh, debt. Uh, it's, it's again, it's non-binding, but it allows us to move forward with that process. Um, we have to have this in place in order to, uh, get into the architectural contract, which will be the next item on the agenda. Um, and so that that will qualify to be paid for the, out of funds that we've, we've issued out of that. So we have to have this in place in order to move forward with, uh, incurring any costs with that project. I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, except that it, it does sound redundant from item number one, uh, it really is the same debt. So the USDA has its form of resolution that you just passed for your intent to apply for them. That actually takes the form of a bond the city issues and sells to USDA. And so this resolution, that this ordinance, excuse me, is authorizing, saying, we intend to issue this bond. It's probably gonna be sold to USDA, and in the interim, we can issue temporary notes for that construction, uh, to, uh, construction financing piece that, that Matt was just talking about, so.
Gotcha.
Sounds redundant, really is for the same debt, sure has a little bit different purposes, but otherwise, have any answered any questions yet?
Um, I do have a question, so, I guess hypothetically, even though we did pass the resolution to apply for the loan, for the debt, uh, that's in the form of the bonds, without the ordinance to then issue the debt to USDA, I guess, if, if we never passed the ordinance to issue the debt to USDA, what would happen, I guess hypothetically?
So this is actually even not the ordinance that we say it authorizes. It's not the ordinance that really issues the debt, that would come way further down the road. This is actually a, this authorizes the project, but ultimately, what it says, we intend to issue bonds for this debt. And the reason why that's important is because the next item on your agenda is approval of the architect contract. Uh, normally cash basis and budget would say you can't sign a contract, approve a contract to pay money for something you haven't previously budgeted, which this would qualify for that. The exception is, you're gonna pay for that out of bond proceeds. So the real purpose behind this, or the main purpose why we're doing it today, we have plenty of time to get it done, is because we passed this ordinance today, you can legally approve that architect contract later that says we intend to pay an architect, even though those funds haven't been budgeted.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, hearing none, I would, uh, consider an ordinance or, uh, and a, a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen oh nine, authorizing the issuance of debt for the fire station project. Oh, Council, Councilman By moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkinson.
Yes.
Wilkins, pardon me. Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman By.
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen oh nine is hereby adopted. Next up is consideration of said architectural services agreement with Sheldon Architects for the design of the fire station project, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, thank you, sir, so this is, uh, you know, the actual, um, agreement with Sheldon Architecture to move forward with the design. This is also a requirement in USDA that we have this in place, they're also requiring what's called a, um, excuse me, uh, preliminary engineering report, which is something that an architect or an engineer has to put together. Uh, it's very specific format, it says this is the project, here's some of the things, and then you go down the list of all the things that they have to do in order to, to make, uh, sure that there's a feasible project for USDA funding. So what this architectural agreement does is, is meets those requirements, um, they have the AIA, which is the architecture.
Services agreement.
Yeah, the AIA is the American Institute of Architects, there you go. Couldn't remember what, what that one stood for, uh, standard form agreement between the owner and the architect, so it meets that, uh, based on that itself. Uh, what it does say is that preliminary engineering report, um, will not be, you know, will be the first thing they do, and we're gonna attend, intend to pay for that out of USDA project financing. Uh, and they can't commence any other project or any other piece of the architecture until we have notification, uh, from USDA, so it's contingent based on that. Uh, if we don't secure any funds for this project, doesn't move forward, then we don't end up, uh, paying them anymore. Um, it's an architectural fee based on six percent of the construction costs, they're estimating it to be no more than three hundred thousand dollars. Um, they've got an estimated cost, uh, building costs of, of five million, which is probably fairly accurate. Uh, we're asking course for six point two because there's a, there's legal fees, there's issuance fees, there's other fees attached to that, so that's what the, the actual, uh, bill ends up coming up to, so. Um, then you've got all the basic stuff that you'd see in an agreement, like here's what they're gonna provide, here's what's additional costs, uh, we did put a termination clause in there, um, so that if, you know, financing doesn't come through, we decide not to do the project, then we, we can, um, terminate this agreement within five days of written notice, so. By anything that we, or is outstanding, we pay them based on their hourly rate, go from there, shake hands and walk away. So that's, uh, that's kind of the proposal we're recommending moving forward with Sheldon. Uh, with this project, USDA has decided to allow us to do a negotiated, um, we, we can negotiate with a contractor rather than going through a full bid process, which is a little unusual, in my opinion, from USDA, usually they're design bid build, but, uh, it's just design build, they're, they're accepting that, uh, at this point. I think that has to do with trying to get the money out the door, uh, so they were, they were fine with that, and if they're fine with that, I'm fine with that, because I think we'll end up actually saving money in the end with that kind of arrangement, so, um, yeah, so we're recommending moving forward and approving this as it's written here, and then, uh, getting going with that.
Questions? Hearing none, I would, uh, accept a motion to approve the agreement for architectural services with Sheldon Architects for the design of the fire station project.
Oh, motion.
Councilman Wilkins moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By is in a seconding mood tonight.
Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the agreement is approved. Next up, the heavy, heavy lift of our twenty twenty six budget consideration, Mr. Styles?
I'm gonna do, uh, this, I would, I would describe this as more of an outline than the full-on budget. Um, I'm gonna do a screen share so you guys can see it, so if I screw this up, I apologize, John, thanks for coming.
Thank you guys for completing what we started all those years ago.
See you guys.
Can you guys see that?
I can see it.
Okay, perfect. Let's get going then, all right, so this is, uh, just the discussion piece of the program for this, um, trying to get to where I can see it. Uh, this is kind of a repeat slide from last year, this is sort of how the taxes break out, where we ended up, we were at thirty nine point nine eight nine, which is twenty-two percent of the tax bill, you can kind of see that. So it's a reduction actually from where we thought we were, we actually approved when we did it, um, on the next slide, forty-two point two nine four is what we approved, and then it got adjusted down as, as the abstract came in, and, uh, they found out the taxes and assessed valuation were higher than they anticipated, so, uh, these are all kind of repeat slides just to set the stage for sort of where we're at. Um, when you look at kind of how that breaks down on people, I did update, Armenian home value has gone up, uh, to a hundred, now it's over a hundred thousand in Hillsborough. Um, so that property tax bill for people rate shakes out kind of like this, so our portion of that is four hundred and sixty-two, sixty-three. Um, it's pretty good value, I think, for the money, for the, all the services we provide, um, so that's kind of what the property tax looks like. When we look at the assessed valuation, yeah, I got these guys in the way. Uh, put them over here, let's put them over here. Um, so you can kind of see how that assessed valuation, I put a trend line on it, you can kind of figure out where that's going there, it's a little.
We're, we're trending up.
We're trending up, yeah, um, we had an increase between last year and this year of five point seven percent. Uh, overall, I use a compound annual growth rate formula, it's a little bit more accurate, I think, uh, when you're kind of talking about measuring growth over time. Uh, four point four three percent, so that's pretty solid, um, everything's moved forward really pretty well with that, so. It's about where we anticipated being, a little bit higher actually, so, uh, and again, once, once the abstract comes in and may actually change again, one never knows, that's kind of how that works, so. Uh, what that means for us is the revenue neutral rate that the county has, um, computed that we, we should have to do, if we're gonna follow the revenue neutral rate is thirty seven point nine eight nine mils. Uh, would require a reduction of not quite three mils, which translates out to about seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, so where that money would primarily come from, if you look at, if you refer back to kind of how we split our, our mill levy out, is mostly general fund services, because the other things that are tied to that are, uh, debt service, which really isn't, you can't really move that too much. Uh, we love you for the library, we love you for, uh, industrial fund, one mil, uh, and then the, the recreation commission. So those are sort of set by our ordinance as to what those capped out at, I mean, you could theoretically move them around and be less, but they're capped, so we usually just assume that we're gonna budget that full amount for those. Um, so what I'm looking at right now, I haven't finished everything yet, I've been kind of tied up doing a bunch of other things and trying to track down this USDA loan, um, and, and daycare stuff. So what I think we're gonna be at is coming in at forty to forty-two mils, on the high side, forty-two. Um, so my recommendation, the one thing you have to decide today, um, is to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Which is the thirty-seven point.
Yeah, thirty-seven point nine eight nine. If you want us to go with the revenue neutral rate, it's gonna take a little bit of math, um, we're gonna have to go back in and sharpen our pencils and find seventy-two thousand dollars to cut out of the budget, um.
What, you say ours was last year?
We, we move, we approved it at forty-two, and it ended up coming in at just short of forty. So this is.
Though it's today, if you're intent, that doesn't mean that you can't.
We can.
Right, figure out how to get there by the time you get to budgeting.
Also true, our, our requirement here is, um, July, by July twentieth, we have to give the county clerk a, a notice of intent, so whether we're gonna do it or not, it's basically a yes or no. Uh, they're requesting on their, their notification to the clerk's office that we put what we think our bill levy is going to be, forty-two. Um, budget law, you know, once you publish your budget hearing, traditionally, you, you would publish it, you can always, you can never go above that, but you can always come down from that.
Right.
So I would suggest, you know, sending them the revenue neutral rate exceeding, uh, comment with forty-two mils, and then we work our way back, I think we're gonna be closer to forty, truthfully.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's kind of like the decision point for today, so put that in the back of your mind. Um, and then we'll kind of walk through some of the other things that are going on within this budget, and sort of the assumptions that we've made. Um, so what I did was I took our strategic priorities and, and started looking at those. Uh, housing, so for next year, we're gonna dedicate some staff time to cataloging our housing sidewalks, infrastructure, uh, increased code enforcement stuff. Uh, maybe consider some modified or pilot incentive programs, depending on what the data shows, um, there's not a ton of spend there, it's more of a time thing. Um, so I wouldn't anticipate there being any kind of, you know, real direct financial obligation with that priority, we're just gonna kind of orient our time and our, and our priorities a little differently for that, so. Uh, unless we come up with some really cool pilot program or incentive program, um, which there are some out there, may, we may find something, we may see, um, we wanna kind of pivot on that later. Uh, economic opportunities, most of that stuff falls through the industrial fund, um, and so that one is funded with one mil of property tax, that goes to the CCAC. Uh, and then we have funds that get transferred in from the electric fund primarily. Um, we've also got a grant from Patterson Foundation that's sitting out there for three hundred thousand dollars, it's a three-year grant, but pay for a position. Um, and then kind of ta, it tapers off after a few years, and for some of the, uh, incentive programs that we've kind of wrote some things in there, it's primarily geared toward downtown, but it could also be for other areas of town too. It's economic opportunities, so it's all economic development kind of based stuff. We should hear back on Patterson thing this month, it's supposed to be, they're supposed to announce that this month. I, it's a, it's pretty positive that they passed us into the full application stage, though, they don't usually do that if they're not serious about it, so. I'm feeling pretty good about it, we'll see. Um, and then we've got an outstanding grant request for the, uh, Plaza Amphitheater to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, fifty thousand there, and then we've got a, a standing commitment from a donor for seventy-five thousand, if we get the combination of those things, I think we could actually build that next year, so. There's a lot of, there's a lot of blue sky in that, but, you know, if we get those funding things, that, those are things we can do for next year. Um, and we, we will put those in the budget as potential options, and so they'll have the authority to do those if, if it does come through. Um, the educa, educational connections, uh, we'll talk about some connecting events with Tabor and the high school, and the Come Home to Hillsborough campaign is written into the strategic plan, that's more of a marketing deal, so we've got some of that, uh, some money kind of tucked into the industrial fund for that. Uh, and then the Tabor corridor planning, um, kind of looked at that, it's a little further into the project, but there's some grant programs that I, um, would look at, potentially applying for this year that would pay for planning. And so that would be something we could look at in twenty-six, and then maybe if we got that funding, we can move into twenty-seven, do it, so. Uh, otherwise, you know, we'll probably look at twenty-seven to, to factor it into our budget spend. Uh, the sustaining progress, obviously the fire station project, we just did a lot of stuff on that, um, so it's gonna be USDA financing and/or congressional appropriations, uh, the mayor's in Washington DC this week, and I know he's got some meetings with our elected officials to talk primarily about public power. Uh, but I know Senator Moran's staff wants to talk about the fire station project too, so, uh, ready or not, Lou, you're, you're up to talk about that one.
Ready.
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 Yep, uh, sustaining progress, a couple of things with that, you know, we've got, we called out the senior center in the daycare facility, uh, so we, I factored in the, the ten thousand dollars for the senior center, uh, to continue that support, they haven't come in and asked for more, I mean, we, we could theoretically do more if we wanted to. Uh, for the daycare facility, what I would propose to do is put them on the city internal utility rate, I think that would be the best bang for their buck, um, and it's not, it doesn't, it covers the cost for us, I mean, we, we're not gaining anything on the utility side, but it would cover, it would reduce their cost pretty significantly.
Help them a lot too.
Um, it's a huge facility, it'd be a way to, to, to be a way for the city to work with them on that, and then we're, we're still not losing anything, you know, it's not cash out of our pocket necessarily, it's just we're foregoing collecting that revenue from them. Uh, and that's something you could do with, as just a policy, uh, but I, that's how I would propose moving forward with that, I think that probably has the best bang for the buck.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, begin discussion with senior transportation and walkability, I got, I got a reach out from the folks at Parkside Home about that Sunday. Um, so there's an interest in, in talking about that, so some of that transportation planning stuff, uh, with seniors specifically in mind. Um, so there's an interest in, in talking about that. So some of that transportation planning stuff, uh, with seniors specifically in mind. Uh, that'll probably happen starting next year too, maybe even later this year. Uh, KPP Energy on the power assurance piece. So I, I don't have a whole lot to report on that. Other than the solar project is going to go in in October and hopefully be on the ground running by April. And then building additional content, telling the Hillsborough story. We are going to be developing an app, which we got a grant for. Uh, newsletter, I think is something that's some, something we need to be pursuing. Uh, of course, Cali's doing videos. We do quite a bit of those, Coffee with Mayor. Uh, Lou's got a new series coming out called Book Reviews with Mayor Lou. I think that's what it's called, right?
That's it.
Yep. And then I'm doing the city files with Matt Stiles. Cause we're, we're good at naming things around here, uh, which where we just kind of explain things in, in local government. So I think it'll be
I lost you, Matt.
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, perfect. Uh, the newsletter, I think is something we need to look at. Um, since the free press is, is gone to shopper format, I think that there may be an opportunity for us to, to put, put together a newsletter and kind of tell that story and maybe even insert it into their paper like they do other inserts. Um, and then it gets delivered to everybody in town still. So that might be a good opportunity there. So those are the strategic plan priority things that we're kind of looking at and those factored into the budget. Uh, I'll kind of look at some of the, just the funds, the big funds, uh, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, the general fund for twenty six, we've seen some increased costs. Um, our insurance increase, uh, with K Camp. Property, uh, is expected to be tw- fifteen percent for twenty six. Part of that, a, a, a large part of that is, uh, just inflation. Um, and then there's also the reinsurance for K Camp went up twenty five percent. Um, so they have a reinsurance product. Uh, and then our, uh, they did evaluations of our property. And so that'll probably make part of that change too. Kind of contributes to that. The good news is, is that even with that fifteen percent increase, we're still quite a bit lower than what we were proposed to renew with EMC. So we're still in better shape than we were. Um, it's just, it's going to go up. Uh, the same with our health insurance umbrella policy we have with K Mint Health Insurance. They're anticipating twelve percent. Uh, we actually have an update meeting Thursday, so that mon- number may change. Uh, they were kind of, that was kind of on the high side of their guess. Um, so we'll see what that looks like. Uh, we also have some inflationary pressures on just a variety of things. Anywhere from two to twenty five percent on some things. Um, and it's been kind of crazy. And you know, with all the uncertainty at the federal level, you know, some of those things start to, we're starting to see some of the stuff that we buy creep up. So, you know, and I know that the Consumer Price Index went up today. It was two point seven percent. Um, they're cutting programs. So with all that uncertainty, it's kind of hard to figure out. I mean, that's just a it's just an environment we're going to have to deal with. So, um, our revenue remains pretty steady. Our sales tax has declined slightly. That's something that always can keep an eye on. Uh, I guess if there is good news with inflation, that, that will push the sales tax up a little bit because stuff is more expensive. So theoretically, I guess as a win there, I don't know. Still sucks, um, but we're going to work on, we'll keep, keep our eyes on that. Make sure that's, uh, uh, good. So, um, as far as how the general fund breaks down, sixty seven percent of our expenditures in there are for personnel. Um, so what I've kind of factored out or what we're working from is the initial kind of guesses, four to six percent, uh, wage adjustments. I want to continue with the wage adjustments. I think that's something we need to be looking at. Uh, especially if the job market tightens up and we're having to compete with more. Um, so what, like what we did this year, uh, you would have an opportunity to split that between cost of living and merit based adjustments. I'll dial that in a little bit more once I've had a chance to meet, uh, with department heads and kind of get, get a better feel for that. Uh, next year, we're planning on streamlining, kind of collapsing a couple of the department budgets for Parks and Recreation together into kind of one. Uh, there's, we got it split out in a lot of different ways and that was just a factor of how things were split before. Uh, but now that we've kind of streamlined that, I mean, we'll keep the pool and golf and, and parks and rec. Those are kind of the three things. Keep those separated, but everything else will kind of get collapsed into parks and rec. So, uh, I think it'll be easier for, for David to figure out where where to go things and what, you know, what that makes sense. So it's probably a little bit easier for you guys to figure out what we're actually spending on that. So uh, there's always a request for additional funding for equipment and some smaller capital improvement projects. Uh, but the bottom line is we're going to try to continue maintaining the service level. Uh, again, we're going to shoot for forty, that forty mil mark and try to hit that. Um, but those are kind of the general fund assumptions. I don't have a whole lot of detail at this point. I'm still working through that. So any questions about just that basis with that limited information?
Uh, I have a couple of comments, um, and forgive me for not remembering. I can't, can't remember if, for the last budget. If you put in a section of, if we were to try to cut some of our spending, like how that breaks down. Did, did you, I think you did.
Yeah, we did. We can tell, like, we can tell you how much the, uh, just the, the personnel stuff costs. Like we can tell you that is X number of dollars. Um, you know, said, I, what is it? Seventy six thou- seventy two thousand? If you wanted to close the pool down, we could do that.
Because, I mean, and you know, because I think there's a lot of, I mean, I just want to say a bit of misconception with how we sort of spend the money. And you know, people always want us to cut how much we're spending. So I think it's always nice to show them more. If you want us to cut it.
Oh, yeah.
This is what, yeah, here's what that looks like. So I think that even, you know, and even if, you know, they don't necessarily see it now. So that's something that can be referred back to. We're like, this is what we would be losing if we were to do that.
For sure.
And then, should have wrote it down. Um, I think I had another comment. Um, I don't know how exactly it would look, but in regards to the senior center and, uh, what we do. I did sit down and talk to him last week. Um, and I think it would be helpful if, I guess you, I don't, I don't know how your schedule looks. I don't want to just throw stuff on you. Um, if you wouldn't mind also going to talk and see what different avenues we could do. I mean, whether that's helping them, you know, get grants, look for grants, or it does lead to maybe an increase in how much we do give.
Yeah.
I mean, just so that those services that we provide aren't diminished in any
Yeah.
type of way.
Yeah, that's fair. Um, what I'd say with the senior centers, we've offered in the past to, to help them with that.
Yeah.
We're not like super, it's hard for us to be super active in looking for things that would be helpful for them grant wise.
Yeah.
I mean, if they had a list and that's something we can talk about with them, like what is it that you need, then maybe we can help. Uh, and then we've also in the past, it's actually in the MOU that we have with them, provide, um, you know, recreation or, uh, cultural programming through our museum and things like that. So we've offered things like that, but they really haven't ever taken us up on it, not, not fully.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I think we can definitely do that. I meet with Brenda. Not as often as I should, probably once every, uh, four or five months, maybe. Um, and then I typically end up going to, they, they have a regional senior center meeting. I get invited to that. That's always a that's always an event. So we go to that. It's fun. It's fun. Uh, but yeah, we can definitely meet with them and see if there's things that we could do to enhance the service. They do a lot.
Yeah.
They feed a lot of people, so.
Um, I had one more. I'm sorry, could you, could you go back a little bit? I just helped jog my memory. Maybe one more.
Is the ten thousand the extent of what the city?
Yeah. Yeah, in cash. We just write the, you know, that's a two part check, basically. We write in two checks.
You know what? I lost it.
Okay.
Okay, it'll come back to me eventually.
You weren't, uh, Ronald, you weren't referring to the transportation piece.
Oh, I remember. Thank you. Um, when you we could give a quick synopsis of how do you figure out, is it just looking at trends to see what we could be looking at for a mill levy? You know how you have your range of forty to forty two, uh, but you think it's closer to forty? How do you, I guess, figure all that out?
A little bit of science and a whole lot of intuition in that. Um, so what we do, kind of how I start with putting out the putting together the budget is we'll start with kind of revenue projections and look at where, where things are kind of trend wise, what things can expect. If there are things we know out there, we'll look at that. Uh, and then because, uh, personnel is such a big chunk, I usually factor that out first and say, okay, here's here's some scenarios that we could be looking at. No increase. We're going to do some kind of merit or cola and then I kind of build it up from there. Then I sit down and meet with all the department heads and we go over kind of what their wish list is and we pair that back usually. Um, yeah, and then we kind of back into, back all that information into it and kind of see where it goes from there. Uh, you kind of get a feel for it after you've done it for a few years, like where you're going to be at. Um, and you know, that, that budget form, it, it makes you balance it to a certain amount. So you can, I, I wouldn't say manipulate it, but you can make it kind of come out to where you need it to be. Um, and that's, that's kind of how you do that. I mean, there's a little, a, a little bit of science to it in the projecting piece and kind of the forecasting. And then a whole lot of intuition and horse trading with the department heads to make sure that we got where we need to be.
Sure.
Um, and then, you know, of course we factor in whatever you guys come up with as far as what you want to see. You know, if you came to me and said, we need to, we need to be revenue neutral, then I would, I would start there. We're going to work back from that and go from there. So but I usually, the process I have, it will end up at a number and kind of work, work from there. So that's how I've done it in the past. And I, you know, I don't typically sit down with the, the council and go through all the line items. My, my philosophy is if you can't trust us to effectively spend money on toothpicks or, you know, toothbrush, not toothbrushes. Pencils and toilet paper, you know, uh, I, I, I think we got another problem we got to talk about. Um, so generally speaking, that's kind of how we approach that. I don't know if that's helpful.
No, it was helpful. I just, I don't know, just, I'm not trying to get on any soapbox, but I just, I don't know. I feel like it kind of kind of hurts a little bit when I hear comments that are made about kind of how we do things. And you know, I mean, you spend a lot of time, you know, formulating things and I guess, I, I want to try to clear up as many misconceptions as possible about how we spend money. Because I don't think we're just throwing parties and just burning it, you know? No, I, I guess I, I'd just like to get in the record as much as possible, just how much time is devoted into doing this. So that people, I don't know, I was also curious myself, but I don't know, I just, uh, I don't know.
I'd invite anybody to sit in and, um, you know, if you wanted to come to the budget meetings where we have things we can welcome to. Um, they happen during the day usually, so it might not be as exciting as you think it is. Uh, yeah, no, it, it's, it's, it does take a lot of time to put together, um, but it's, you know, the core, it's, it's our core document that we put out every year, you know, this is our spending priorities. If you follow the money, this is what the priorities are. Right? So, um, it, it, that along with the auditor, probably the two major financial documents that we put out. And you can learn a lot from somebody's budget, kind of where they're prioritizing their spending. So I'd like to actually spend more time doing it and produce, uh, more of a narrative budget, which is where I would ultimately love to go, but I've never gotten there because it takes so much more time to put together that. But, um, you know, if we had a whole staff person devoted to that, we could turn out a beautiful looking budget with charts and graphs and pictures. Win awards for it, but you know, this works too. So this just kind of handles what we need to do.
And I, I think it's just nice to just hear you explain how you do things. So
Yeah, sure.
It's, it's good knowledge. So.
You know, Ronald, that is the challenge every year. And we've had every year we have the same conversation, you know, where, where we ask for input and, and every year we get, uh, we get skunked in terms of, uh, of overt, uh, in, input into the budget. We get a lot of covert input. That's, you know what? That's just human nature.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not saying that we should ever develop so thick a skin that we're not willing to listen to, uh, people outside of this room. But at the same time, you know, we, we have been elected to, uh, to do a job and we have to do that ultimately, while we were elected to do that to the best of our ability, right?
Yeah.
And so, you know, along with, uh, along with Matt and the city staff and all the work that goes into it. You know, we have to do our due diligence and, and we feel and, and appreciate very much the questions you're asking because you know, the more informed we can, we can try to make the public, the better the process is in the end. But at the end of the day, you know, we're, uh, to, uh, to make decisions that, uh, that, that are in the best interests of the constituents, the citizens of Hillsborough, Kansas. And, you know, and I'm confident that we will continue to do that.
Okay.
Um, so I appreciated the way you, um, uh, stated the case on a lot of these slides to exceed the revenue neutral rate. I think that was helpful and tying that to our strategic initiatives, the things we had uh, worked so much on. So, you know, thank you for doing that.
Okay. At the end of the day, I'm, and I'm sorry, I'm, I can't see the room as, as well as with the slides up, but, uh, at, at the end of the day, the, uh, it, it just costs more to do the same amount of work, right? So, and I was going to ask, sixty seven to sixty seven percent of our budget is personnel. You know, are we going to look for that seventy? But out of personnel, you know, raises that kind of thing, you know? Or less staff, if you will. I mean, that's really kind of what it amounts to in the end. I've yet to hear anybody come to me, maybe, maybe they have you, uh, guys, but not to me and, and ask us to do less. Please don't do this. And, and to your point, Ronald, that you made earlier, you know, pointing out, well, this is what it would take.
Lou, I think you're covering your microphone.
Isn't a bad idea to, uh, to, uh, you know, to, uh, to present, you know, that if we're going to go revenue neutral, this is, this is what we would not be able to do. And, uh, I think, you know, and may, maybe before we get to the end of the budget process, we can have a little bit of that, uh, to present.
Okay. Good points. Uh, I'll hit the rest of kind of the big funds. Uh, I wanted to make sure we hit the industrial fund. It's small as a portion. Um, but it's kind of where some of these, these things live that we're talking about strategic priorities. So uh, it's our economic development activities. Um, again, it's one mil of property tax and transfers from the electric apartment. Um, we pay for a portion of Cali salary out of there and then the C CAC agreement. And then if there's other things that we want to do out of there, we uh, we'll take that if it's an economic development thing. So, uh, that Patterson Foundation, Family Foundation Grant will, would go through there as well. So that would actually, that would add a position, although it'd be grant funded in short term. Uh, and then provide for some development, uh, incentives, primarily downtown stuff, but there's some other things in there too. So um, if we get that, we'll, we'll obviously spend a lot more time talking about what that looks like. So I think that's an important fund to hit. Again, very small piece.
What kind of position would you add with that grant?
Uh, it would be a downtown development director. So they would do some stuff. I'd actually have them probably learn some stuff in the bowling alley. Uh, that new retail shit space we're working on. It would be running that and then working with, uh, other downtown businesses on some just ways we can help them expand or help them improve. Yeah. Uh, so if it's Patterson Family Foundation money, I'm happy to spend their money and try to make a difference with it. So uh, then we hit the utility accounts, uh, or the utility funds, excuse me. Uh, water and sewer, they sort of live together. So I've, I've talked about them together because it's the same staff for each one. Uh, th- this is going to feel a little repetitive too with all the utilities, but we'll consider, would you rate, rate considerations at the end of this year for next year? Uh, I did include that four to six percent of the wage adjustments in there. Uh, with water and sewer, I did budget an increased amount for recruitment of a more skilled person, um, to fill our open position. So what we did was put, put more money toward that position being open, um, with the idea that we're going to try to recruit somebody who's got more experience. To be determined what that looks like, but we'll, we'll, we would just put more resources there, uh, in case. And then if we don't end up spending it on that, then we've got money for overtime, which is a big suck in this department. There's a lot of overtime when you don't have enough people. So, um, input costs for the water department. Input costs for the water department, pretty dramatic over the last five years. Chemical costs are up thirty, forty percent. Pipe material anywhere from ten to twenty. Uh, those are just kind of the easy stuff in there, and then if you break down further, it just gets worse and worse. Uh, this is just a trend over the last five years. Again, with the uncertainty out there in the market, I don't know where it's gonna look like, but we've got. We've got to put some money behind the chemical costs and. Uh, when we talk about how do we do the budgeting piece, we do have, we do have some fixed things in there, so there's some things, there's some debt service in there. Our water contract with the state is a fixed cost. We kind of know where that's gonna be, so. Uh, we kind of, we plug in the things we know we have to pay and the fixed costs, and then we back out from there and look at, you know, what are the other things we need to do, so. Uh, can't run them water plant without chemicals. That's just a fact, so we gotta just take that into account. Uh, capital equipment, facilities things, we're gonna continue with that pilot project, which you guys approved the bid or the payout on one of those, so. Explore some more opportunities for funding out there. There's some new things out there that. Are potentially coming down the lines, some new opportunities maybe, so uh we'll look at those and keep kind of pushing on that. Uh, it's time to start considering a new round of upgrades for the water plant, and I think having that conversation start now. Cause it it takes four years probably from start to finish to get to that, so. Uh, I think in the next year, we definitely need to start talking about that. Evaluate the need for more of the sewer lining projects. That's one of the things we replaced pumps this year rather than opting for more sewer lining. There's still a couple of sections that need to be done with that. Uh, one of the things we've talked about within the sewer department is the ability to move the lagoon system to a non-discharging system. Um, so right now, when we go into the, things go into the lagoon, they go through our natural process and then they're discharged out into the river. If you move to a non-discharging lagoon, which means that you take that effluent and you. Spray it on to farm crops or, you know, use it in some other way, gray water effectively. Um, you have significantly less regulatory requirements with that. Um, it's something we've talked about for a couple of years. We just haven't had the time or time or staff to devote to it. Um, so it's something that we'd like to look at in twenty six because I think that will help us. Uh, meet our regulatory requirements within the sewer and actually, there's there's some benefits to move into a non-discharging system too. So that's water and sewer. Any questions about those things? I can't, I can't tell you about rates at this point. Uh, we'll look at them.
Sorry, would there be um? Do you know of any uh cons outright if we were to go to a non-discharging?
Yeah, I mean, there's some, there's some costs to it. Uh, I think that's probably the biggest thing and piping things with that. There's some technical expertise you kind of need to know too. You gotta go through a permitting thing with that too, so the H E will have to change your permit. We have a discharge permit right now. It's a little bit of a process. And that's probably why we really haven't jumped in and done it. Okay, well, it's electric. Uh, like I said, it's a little bit. A little bit redundant. We do rate adjustment, look, look at rate adjustments in November. Kept the merit uh wage increase part of that in there. Uh, the big thing with electric is energy purchase, so. Uh, KPP Energy puts together a estimate for us each year as to what they think our energy costs are gonna be for budgeting purposes. Uh, just short of two million is what it looks like for twenty six.
What was the last year, do you remember?
I don't remember how much we spent, one point six.
But it's gone up a little bit.
Yeah, and tha- that's kind of on the high side. What they do when they estimate that out is they look at kind of historical averages as far as consumption goes and. You know, what they know is in the system, what they know is coming up for costs and stuff. That they'll firm that up quite a bit by the end of the year, but they need to give us this number now, so. There's some changes to the federal energy policy, which introduce some volatility. There's an end to some of the the uh clean energy stuff. I don't think, it's not gonna affect our project here. Um, as long as we get it in the ground and get it going, uh, but there may be some things that change kind of how we approach. What we're gonna do, so. Don't know, and then of course, there's changes that happen within the policy system that maybe don't directly affect us as a city, but affect. KPP Energy or Southwest Power Pool, uh, that could potentially trickle into some some costs as we move down, so. Uh, input costs, again, it's just like water and sewer. They've gone up pretty dramatically in the last five years. Availability is still an issue on some of the stuff too. Uh, transformers thirty to sixty percent, conductor, just conductor wires that we run, uh, twenty five percent. Those are just the sampling. There's, I got a whole list if you want to look at it. Uh, things for next year that we know, capital equipment, facilities, that bucket truck we ordered, what, three years ago? Or put our name on the list three years ago? Twenty six, baby, it'll be here. They'll be ready for us.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I have no idea how much it's gonna cost. They couldn't tell us three years ago and I don't know, I mean, they just said, hey, we're gonna have you on.
Didn't they give us like a rough?
Yeah, they gave us a rough. It's it's about a quarter million dollars for a bucket truck.
Probably add what, thirty percent to that and that's probably the.
Might as well, because I don't know, I'm throwing darts at it anyway, so. Uh, and then the other thing, the big capital project they want to do next year is replacement of Carriage Hills. There's underground line. They have a direct, what's called Direct Berry Line in there. Uh, that has a tendency to disintegrate over time and then it's about time to replace that. Um, and then a new, new transformer upgrade up there too, so. Uh, they originally had purchased some transformers to do that this year, but then we redirected those over to the Menonah Housing Project, so. With the lead times on those, you kind of have to be playing now for something, you know, a year from now. So, that's kind of the electric fund. Uh, I don't know, any questions specific about that? That's actually probably, that's our biggest fund.
We were at one point nine last year.
Point nine, okay.
So it's.
It's about right.
I was way off. Okay, sanitation's last utility. Uh, we'll look at rates again. Uh, kept the wage adjustments in there. This one's not quite as, there's just not quite as much to deal with from a, you know. From a cool, I mean, the equipment's expensive. The truck maintenance is probably the killer on all that stuff. Price of diesel fuel, if that has a big jump, that has a pretty big impact. Any changes Marion County may make at the recycling or the transfer station could have an impact with this too. This one, I mean, it it's the smallest of the utilities and. Uh, it has disproportionately probably the most comments about it. Uh, it's just what it is, I mean, so.
How long do those poly carts usually last for?
Quite a while, poly carts.
Those were due to be replaced. I mean, mine's fine, I just.
Yeah, we actually just bought some placements because we're running out. We pulled out of service the poly carts when they're done, the dumpsters. Kind of the same thing, they're on a rotation. Wow, not a real strong rotation. They're on an as-needed replacement, but they, they're supposed to last twenty years.
Good, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we we have the ability to fix those if we have time to do that and David has committed to doing some more of that, so.
Citizens rent those, right? Is there, there's a charge.
Yeah, the big, the big stuff here is is the diesel fuel, the truck maintenance. I mean, it's. It is an expensive utility to run from that perspective, but I mean, it's still generates profit for us, so.
Well, and I I honestly would think that our, uh, citizens would have a worse. Out um, experience if we were to contract it out, having dealt with. Having dealt with that in the past, it's, it's not good. It's just not.
I'm getting mixed bag, yeah. Okay, so those are kind of the major funds. Uh, and this is the timeline. I ma- I made an assumption that we probably want to. Uh, exceed the revenue neutral rate hearing, based on the feedback you guys gave, have given me in the past, so. Um, if that's the case, uh, July fifteenth, the big thing today is, you know, are we gonna? Exceed the revenue neutral. We may need to make an action on that because we don't have another meeting before the twentieth deadline. Um, if you go that route, what we'll end up doing is that we'll go to the county clerk. County clerk will take that information, put it in a consolidated notice with all the other jurisdictions that are interested in changing their, are exceeding their revenue neutral rate. That'll get e uh mailed out to every taxpayer in the jurisdiction. Uh, and then we'll have to post that we're gonna have a revenue neutral rate hearing along with the budget hearing. Sometimes that's caught, you know, sometimes that the, we did have one person show up to the rec commission meeting um on a revenue neutral. He saw the revenue neutral thing in the paper, got their notice in the mail and came to the rec commission meeting. So, that does something. It does something. I don't know, wow. So if that's the way we want to go, we're gonna, we need to make that decision tonight. Um, in August, we'll review the full draft budget, the first meeting, and then we'll just kind of have a standing review of the budget every meeting thereafter. Uh, you'll be able to tweak this up until um. The September sixteenth meeting, uh, which point I would suggest we have the revenue neutral rate and the budget hearing and then look at adoption. That has to be done before September twenty, uh, so that it can get certified to the county clerk or certified to the county clerk by the October the first. So, that's kind of the timeline. I mean, it's a, it's a outline basically of the budget. Again, I haven't quite dug into. I'm a little behind from where I normally would be, so my apologies on that. But yeah, the the action item for you guys tonight is whether or not you want to exceed the revenue neutral and provide that notification to the clerk.
So, I was gonna say, so if. Are you dead set on forty two?
Not dead set on forty two?
Cause I think we're gonna have to exceed it anyway. But, do we have to have a number to tell them? Or you just tell them we exceeded?
You have to have. I would prefer to err on the side of let's go high and then work our way back.
Yeah, I agree. Don't like it, but. So by voting tonight on that, that allows us that flexibility. We don't necessarily have to.
You do not.
Say we are going to exceed it or whatever, but that's the way things are looking, so we want to thwart ourselves that.
We're giving ourselves the flexibility to do that. Uh, you're under no obligation to do that at the end of the day.
Are there any other comments or questions for Matt? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to um. To uh notify the county clerk that we will exceed the, or plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate, not to exceed forty two mils. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, uh, we will. Issue that notification to the county clerk and uh on the revenue neutral rate. Next up, uh, it looks like we have a land bank meeting to handle a couple of items. So we will uh convene the land bank of the city of Hillsborough at this time. First item there is minutes from our June seventeen twenty twenty five meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt the minutes as as submitted.
All motion.
Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Secondly, we have vouchers totaling three thousand twenty five dollars, Mr. Stiles.
So you have in there uh your regular Planted Mowing, um, and then there's also an EBH invoice in there for fifteen hundred dollars. That's for plating, replating services for the AMPI building.
Matt's all done.
Yep, all done, filed.
Okay, any, any other questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
Make that motion.
Councilman By moves. Is there a second? Councilman, Councilman Wilkins seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, Mr. Stiles, we have your report, sir.
Thank you. Okay, uh, got a lot. It's been super busy. Um, so first thing off is the PD office flooding. We've engaged with uh American Metropolitan Environmental. To conduct a mold and asbestos inspection of the police department facility due to some consistent persis- persistent flooding issues. Um, once we get that back, we can kind of evaluate what the next steps would be. There may be some remediation that needs to happen on that. If that's the case, we can file, we can actually file an insurance claim because the flooding is an act that would be covered under that. We may also have to, just to prep you, we may also, if it's too bad, have to relocate the police department temporarily until we can.
Great place to put it in about a year.
Figure out what to do with them and then maybe a long-term solution, like we talked about it at the last meeting, is that you, we gotta give, we gotta give them a long-term solution too, so.
Matt, Matt, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let the council know that I did. Meet with Chief Hebert and toured the facility and he showed me where the issues were relative to the flooding. And the things that they've been dealing with. And uh, I just told him, we are not gonna have any employee working for the city of Hillsborough that is working in an unsafe. Environment from a health standpoint. Just, we just can't have it. And so, you know, we may have to, you know, and 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 going back to the budget discussion real quickly. There are things, my mom used to refer to them as T I F. Uh, things I forgot or things that happened that we don't necessarily plan for. And this might be one of those things, and this is another reason to make sure that we are allowing ourselves some flexibility. In our budgeting process because, you know, something like this could come up and and we're gonna have to deal with it. Thank you.
Yeah, good point. Uh, BSNA, it's our accounting software that we we've, we're planning on converting to. They're gonna need some additional time. Um, now it's got pushed out to October, which is real inconvenient. Um, the problem is, seems to be is the data conversion and the system implementation delaying from G Works's, this system. Uh, they've had a couple of other projects that they've had to just spend an exorbitant amount of time on a conversion process. Um, so they've had, you know, like I say, it it really, it comes down to a G Works issue. Um, unfortunately, we're kind of stuck in the boat we're stuck in with G Works. Can't really do anything. Um, even if we wanted to do a conversion without bringing the data over, it was still quite a ways out and that really doesn't make any sense for us, so. Um, the good is, is we've paid, you know, paid BSNA for the implementation piece. There's no. There's no real charge and they said they wouldn't charge us for that, those four months in October or from October to the end of the year. For that, so there's not like an additional charge we're gonna incur, but we will have to have G Works on or until we can transition off, so. Uh, I think that they are gonna allow us to stay within the legacy systems where we don't have to move to the cloud. Uh, because we've heard horror stories about that too, so. Uh, G Works just, it it kind of underscores the problem we have with G Works. I don't think we could switch vendors and find somebody who's miraculously gonna be able to figure out. G Works and how to transition that data. I think it's just kind of stuck in a garbage state with them and. We're just gonna have to deal with it, unfortunately, so. Uh, we still have a lot of confidence in BSNA and they, you know, are extremely apologetic about it, uh, but this is just the facts on the ground, so. Uh, we're endeavoring to persevere on that and we're just gonna keep moving forward.
Is, and G Works hasn't had any type of talks about like shutting down the legacy system and forcing people to the cloud, at least not yet.
I think they extended that.
They, they did, and it was to be twelve thirty one of twenty five, but they, my understanding is, has, they've received feedback. And they're not able to get their conversions to people on the cloud. And therefore they're extending that deadline to the following year of twenty s- twelve thirty one of twenty six. First, we were really pushing because they were not going to have any support for that legacy system, and so now because of the delays. And they are offering that support through the following year.
So they're not even as high and dry, just with the crappy accounting system they normally have, so. Uh, we just can't transition to what we want to do, kind of the way we want to do it, so. Is what it is. Uh, daycare project delays, this has been quite, quite the project. Um, so we've had a lot of construction issues with Weems and Company, which I know we've talked about some of that. Um, that escalated pretty substantially with the state when the C D B G, when we filed that C D B G extension. Uh, because of the things that were happening with them and their reluctance, I think, to to make and address those issues. Uh, so C D B G got involved and set some pretty hard deadlines and we had to have a little uh conversation with them. Pretty firm conversation. I think the mayor did an excellent job of putting it to them, like this is what it's gonna be. And so they've had to rip out and redo. And so they've had to rip out and redo the front entry point, uh, the drainage on the front entry point. They've had to rip out some of the. Uh, some items in the, in the basement and do mold testing on that, which has all come back negative. So there's no mold in the basement from the water that they left there over time. Uh, they've done some ceiling on the back of the building that they needed to do. Uh, there's a couple of punchless items that they have to have done. Uh, their final drop dead deadline is the eighteenth at five P M. Um, and if it's not, we're gonna, we're gonna do a walkthrough at that time, and if it's not done, then we, our intention, the city's intention is to seek liquidated damages. Per the contract that we have with them through the CDBG process, so it's five hundred dollars a day and we can retroactively. Go back, from my understanding, to when substantial completion was finished, so it'd be a pretty significant amount of money. Um, the state's advised the city and the, the daycare board not to pay them anything. They're still holding on to about almost three hundred thousand dollars, uh, until they get this to our satisfaction. Um, to the daycare board's satisfaction.
This month, right?
Yeah, that's, that's Friday.
Friday, yeah.
So, uh, if you've noticed a lot of activity out there, they are. Curiously working to try to meet that deadline. Um, the architect signed off on all the drainage issues and that was another issue. I think the architect was trying to be too light-handed with them. Uh, so we had to be heavy-handed with them, um, and again, I think Lou, Lou did a good job of, of putting them to task on that. And, uh, there, I, I think they'll get it done based on what I've seen, but, uh, so it's been a mess.
Yeah, how overdue are we now at this point of getting, getting kids in the building and seeing this thing open?
A month.
About a month now.
Um, the, the plan, and the way I understand it, um, is for them, if they are to be finished on Friday. Uh, the plan is to have the week-long orientation that's required, uh, for staff that next week. And then the week thereafter would be able to open up. Uh, on Friday, they're also having the inspection from KDA chief for the license.
That's just about to happen, so they have not got the license.
Not yet. The inspection happens, yeah, that inspection happens Friday, so.
And what are we hearing from families and how are we communicating this to family?
Yeah, well, I think people have been as patient as they can be, uh, and what I know that the. Micah has done is try to match some of our staff to privately watch some of these kids in the interim so that we can provide some kind of help. Um, and then we've kept some of the staff going by having them come in and clean and do some other things and. You know, it's, it's not great, um, it's been a huge pain in the butt and it's obviously disappointing. And we're just trying to be as forthright and honest with people as we can be, like, this isn't, this isn't a, a daycare issue or a city issue. It's a contractor problem. And Ronald probably has the insight on most of that.
Yeah, um, at least the gist that I have gotten is that. The children, uh, parents have been able to set up some temporary solutions as of right now. Um, of course, everyone's getting a bit restless like Matt was saying, but, you know, they're making it work. Um, but they, they just shouldn't have to have made it work for this long, is the gist of it, so.
Lou, do you have anything to add about the?
No, you know, I, I, I would just again reiterate to, uh, to Jeff's point. That in all conversations that I have had with the contractor and the architect. I have clearly informed them that this is about children, it's about families. And it's about employees that are gonna work at this facility. And those are the people that have been let down by their lack of performance. And so that is what we are holding them accountable for, and that's why we are going to pursue liquidated damages. If they don't get this done by five P M on, uh, on Friday, and I've told the, uh. And I had to have a little bit of a conversation with the architect and, and I, and I let him know very directly that. He doesn't work for Weens and Company. He works for the daycare center for the city of Hillsborough in this process. And that, you know, I realize that people in that space need to maintain relationships. But, you know, we're past that now and, uh, it's time to get this done. And so, you know, that's been pretty clear, I think, and, and, and Matt and Danielle both have, have listened to me. Uh, have conversations with these folks and, uh, and, uh, I think we were pretty direct.
Message was received, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I mean, it's more so just unfortunate the lengths that it took to get them to actually take the request seriously. Because there have been members of the board that have been trying to work with them, like, hey, can we get this done? You know, just give them updates about issues that have stemmed from the construction and it was. For lack of a better, it, it's kind of just been being brushed off and it's just unfortunate that it took state getting involved, Lou getting involved. It, it just shouldn't have had to have happened to begin with, just, just to, just to state that openly.
Agreed, hundred percent.
Okay, so that's daycare, hopefully be open before the end of the month. Uh, grants, outstanding stuff. I think we've kind of talked about a lot of those, but we did receive notification today via. Press release that we did receive ten thousand dollars from the Department of Commerce for a mural on the side of the bowling alley.
Right.
So, we're gonna be doing that, that'll be fun. Uh, we've got a, our, an artist that we, they, they actually did the one over here on, um, Ashen, or excuse me, on Grand and.
Brick Mob?
Yeah, the Brick Mob guys are gonna do this one too, so our greetings mural, um, so their process, it's pretty cool, they. They'll, you know, ask a bunch of questions and kind of get some feedback and, um, they've got a couple of, of processes they can do with the public too. Uh, and then they'll send it out to their artists, uh, they've got a whole network of artists and they'll get sketches back. And then you'll have an opportunity to kind of tweak or choose what you want, and that'll be another opportunity for public, uh, comment, because everybody likes to be. Uh, a critic of, of art, public art, um, so if we make them part of the process, maybe we'll, well, kind of curb some of that, but. It'll be fun to watch, it is.
I'll get to see them.
Exactly, and that goes to my next point, since we lost out on the Blake's Bowlarama, I want to caricature Blake on the side of the bowling alley. Everybody can just see what could have been had they voted for Blake's Bowlarama.
We're, we're coming to that somehow, somewhere.
That's, that's exciting news, uh, we'll, we'll get that going here and once we, they just announced it today, so we haven't got any details on it yet, but. Uh, a couple of quick hit kind of things, Cal Ripken tournament starts, well, kids start coming in Wednesday, uh, over a hundred and twenty players. As in tomorrow, yep, they'll get in, uh, first pitch is, uh, noon on Thursday. Um, so, yeah, gonna, I, I, since the mayor's out of town, again. I, I get the, uh, the duty to throw out that first pitch, it will be a strike, I promise you.
I would love to be there, I did not set the schedule for this.
Yeah, I know, that's, it's unfortunate, but maybe someday Lou, you'll get to throw it that.
Maybe someday.
He's gone last year too, just the timing didn't work out.
A boy can dream, can't he?
AI you there.
Uh, we got the first quarter financial report there, uh, we're a little behind on getting that out, but we'll have the second quarter financial report for you at the next meeting too, so. Uh, those will get published in the newspapers, required by state law, you can kind of see where we're at on those financially, everything. First quarter is usually really pretty rosy and fun anyway, uh, we'll really start paying attention to it in the third quarter and the fourth quarter, so. Uh, but you can take a look at that, uh, you may have noticed some activity over at the Bartle House over by the museum and the community garden. So the construction is underway on that, uh, Spring Branch Construction is doing the foundation. Uh, still waiting to hear back, I got a couple of things from the stonemason I'm still waiting to hear on, so I don't know what their scheduling looks like. Um, Callie's got the strategic plan document, she's got another draft of that, we're gonna look at it tomorrow, so hopefully have that for you guys in August. Uh, water fountain installation at the park, the grant we got for the water fountain, uh, it's actually going over by the east shelter house, um. I know that there's been some comments about that, we've got, we've, we've been doing some work, we're waiting, I think, right on a park, actually. Uh, a little unusual, uh, for it, and then we've got it kind of fenced off with the snow fence. And that's where the, uh, farmer's market is, and so people have asked a lot of questions about what's, what's going on with that, what is that? That's, that's where it'll be and that's what it is, so, uh, we're hoping to have that knocked out, maybe even this week. Uh, bids for Lincoln and Wilson, uh, they, EBH's put those out, so you guys will have a chance to look at those. The bid opening is next week and we'll have a look at them on the fifth. Um, eighteen oh three indigo, um, this has been kind of a thorn in my side, um. Yeah, it's the one coming into town off of a thirteen mile road. It was the one that the county gave a conditional use permit to make. Uh, construction shipping container homes, which we asked them not to do, but they did anyway. Uh, and that, that has expired, and so now they are sending a cleanup letter to them on the site. Uh, I'm not real sure what the county's cleanup process looks like, I know what ours looks like, but, uh, we'll see kind of how that gets resolved. Um, but there's gonna be a process for that, so, uh, they, they're, I guess the key takeaway there is that the conditional use permit is no longer valid. So they can't do that purpose, uh, that, that anymore there, so.
Never did.
Never did, never did.
And I did see, I can't remember when, I think it was around the fourth of July, they were having some type of little get together out there though. There were a bunch of people, there was a grill out there, we said they had a fun time, I guess.
Definitely not what they told everybody they were gonna do there, so is what it is. Uh, but just to reiterate, that is outside of the city limits, and so we don't have any co-enforcement jurisdiction over that. I get asked about that a few times a week, probably, uh, and really not much we have the ability to do with that. Um, so we're working through the county to try to get that worked out. Um, your health insurance savings reports, one of those things that comes every month, so we got the June one there, had a pretty good June, uh, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars saved. For the month compared to a full, full insured plan, um, so we'll get that going there. I got a couple out of office days, actually the eleventh, I've already been gone, um. But twenty-first next week to the twenty-eighth, they'll be there, out, uh, and available though. And the last thing I want to let you guys know, uh, did, you may have gotten an email about registration for the league conference. I registered everybody that wanted to go, I got hotel rooms booked, I think they would have come to you individually on the registration. Okay, so we're good to go on that. Uh, that's all I had, Lou.
Okay, all right, thank you, Matt. Next up, we have, uh, our final opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the room there that I can't see, Matt? Anyone online?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, well, we will close this final public comment opportunity and we'll go to council comments. And Councilman By, we'll start with you this evening.
Uh, nothing, I don't have anything tonight.
Councilman McCarty?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Wilkins?
Think I've said enough this meeting. Think I've probably roughed it enough to others, so it's, I'm okay, sir.
Very good. Councilman Jorgensen?
Yeah, just, uh, welcome to all those people you said are gonna be starting to come tomorrow for the Cal Ripken tournament, so best wishes for, for that tournament. A good, safe tournament here in town and, uh, just, uh, also welcome to all the people that will be here for the county fair. Um, guess what, starting next week for the county fair, so. All I have.
Couple, couple, couple of things that I'd like to add if I could, one is the, uh, uh, we had the Core Community Pool Party. This last week, uh, Thursday, and I want to thank the, uh, Andrea Sneed and the pool staff for their help with that. Core Community is a, is a, is a group in Marion County that helps to lift people out of poverty. It's all about providing hands up and not, uh, hands out, handouts. So, uh, I happen to be on the board of that, and so every year we host them for a pool party at the city pool. Usually in July and, uh, the mayor provides, uh, Pizza Hut supper and, 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 uh, for the group. And then, uh, we have a good time and, uh, a lot of little ones there and, and, uh, looked like everybody really had a good time, so. I want to, uh, to, uh, let everybody know that I'm appreciative of that. Uh, secondly, regarding the league meeting, uh, just make it known that, uh, I. Nathan Eberline has reached out to me and, uh, there's become a vacant spot on the league board of directors. And he has asked me to serve that, uh, unexpired term. And so at their meeting in September, I, my name will be put forward to the board for, uh, for affirmation. Towards that, uh, filling that unexpired term, that's the, uh, the mayor of Belleville. Who's actually, uh, resigning as mayor and taking a job as county administrator. So his position on the board is opened up and they've asked me to fill it and I've agreed to do that. Um, and then finally, uh, back to, uh, the budget conversations that we've had this evening. One thing that's, uh, become clear again, as we've announced an award of another grant. In this case, the ten thousand dollar mural grant, I think it might be beneficial, Matt, as we continue through this process. Maybe this is something Callie could help us with, but it would be good, I think, to, for the people to know just how much money we have received. In grant support over the last five years. Because, you know, we would not be able to do the extra things that we have been able to do, you know, without that support. And I think people don't realize, they think that just somehow happens out of nowhere, but it, it takes a lot of work. And there's some talent for sure in, in the grant writing process, and so definitely want to recognize. Matt and Callie and, and everybody that has participated in helping us secure those grants, but, uh. I think it's a pretty significant number.
It is.
And so, uh, let's, let's make sure we, uh, we publicize that, uh, to the best of our ability as well.
Do that.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and thanks for letting me participate remotely. We'll, uh, we'll do.
Iron one from the ocean to the mountains, sir.
I was getting kind of sick of the waves.
Yeah, trade winds, I think so.
Some kind of teleportation thing?
I talked to Wayne, he loaned me some equipment from Star Trek.
Nice, there you go.
Beam me up, Scotty.
All dating ourselves now.
All right, good night, everybody.